The other person that's on is Diana Coffin.
Like he talked about all the things that Carrie Smith does for Lincoln High, there's no use for me to rephrase them all, but I can use myself for instance. Last December I had a house fire, lost everything in our house. We were sent to Southbridge to motel, no money for to get my son back towards school, no clothing for my son or us. Mrs. Smith made sure that we got clothes, made sure that my son had clothes, she made sure that we had food to eat, and she made sure that we had gas cards to get to and from to get him to school. He did not miss a day of school because of Miss Carrie. You know, she's, uh, my son thinks the world of her, other students thinks the world of her. She goes way and beyond the call of duty of a school counselor. I think that without her being the school counselor, it's gonna be devastating over there. I mean, because like I said, she's brought us food, she's helped us with food, and I know of another student that she's helped got clothes that had no clothes. I've known, just, I mean, it's just phenomenal, the things that she does for these students, and that she doesn't have to do, you know? But she does it out of the kindness of her heart, and she carries everything way beyond. I mean, you know, she's just not a school counselor. She's more, and without her, I don't know what's gonna happen over there. And so, I would really like you all to consider of all the things that she does for the school and for her students, you know? I just think the world of her. I just, you know, when I found out, I was just devastated, and like I told her, I thought I was gonna run late. I was cleaning the house, I forgot about the time, and I said, "I came as I was," so I don't, I wasn't here for a beauty contest, I was here for her. But if you all would just really, you know, consider the things that she's done, and, I mean, the students can tell you. My son, you know, would love to tell you. He's very quiet, very backward, he probably would have to, you know, do this thing, but he loves her to death, and I think without the help from Miss Carrie, the encouragement and stuff, he would not have made it through school. I really don't. So I highly have her up here on a pedestal because she's a wonderful lady, and I want you to see.
At this time, we're ready to commence the actual hearings. We've got five hearings scheduled this evening, or this afternoon, maybe into the evening. But the first is Carrie Smith, and she's represented by Randy Tenny. Randy. Just be comfortable there. Okay. I'll go ahead. The first in request has been made, and the first question we'd like to ask is, do you wish to have an open or closed hearing?
Open.
Open hearing, okay, good. Now let me just, with us, the seat, this afternoon, I think it starts with Rebecca Tinder, who works over as a legal representative for the Board of Education, working with the superintendent and Ms. Randy Tenny's with the AFD, am I correct? And of course, Carrie Smith. Okay. A little procedural information for everyone here. The superintendent has recommended that Carrie Smith be considered for transfer and subsequent assignment. Therefore, the board will call upon the superintendent and/or her designees to state and explain her reasons for her recommendation. After the superintendent has concluded her statements, the employee, in this case, Miss Smith and Mr. Tenny, will be afforded the opportunity to present witnesses and evidence. Written statements or documents may also be submitted to the board for its commitment for our consideration. At the conclusion of the employee's presentation of witnesses and evidence, board members will be provided an opportunity to ask the superintendent and/or Miss Smith questions pertinent to the proposed personnel action. Following that, then both parties will be allowed to give closing arguments or closing statements to the board, summarizing their feelings. As presiding officer, I will rule on all evidentiary and procedural issues. Should any member of the board take issue with any one of my rulings on procedure or evidence, he or she may put the matter to a vote at the full board. While the strict rules of evidence will not be applied, evidence that is not germane to the reasons for this proposed personnel action will not be allowed. This hearing will be recorded, as I stated before. Mrs. Polly is recording that, and once again, just to ask that everybody realize that, you know, she has to be very careful in what she does, and be down every word, and I'm sure everybody will be very careful and courteous to her, as we always are. Okay, so at this time, we're ready to proceed. Mrs. Lucas, are you going to remain up here, or are you going to go with Mrs. Tinder?
Brenda Talis passing out the procedural documents that brought us here today, and those include the notice of the recommendation of the superintendent's request for the hearing this evening, as well as the notice of the hearing this evening, and I think we would like those to be made part of the record of this particular hearing.
I hope it's so noted, and followed it.
If there's any surprise here.
What I'd like to do at this time, if it's agreeable to both parties here, I'd like to have all witnesses that are going to be testifying in this proceeding to be sworn in, and just do those all at one time, please, and that way we can get that out of the way now.
Mr. Tenny, before we get started, do you want this to be extremely formal with, or more on the informal basis of?
What did you, I would get my water.
We're gonna keep as informal as possible so we can speak freely.
And so, what we'll do, from the board's perspective then, is kind of issue a proffer, and then if Mr. Tenny and his client want to ask any questions of the administration, we'll do it that way, so it'll be a little bit more informal.
During your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, how you gonna want to have them, just do a visit. Okay, do you, which, do you know who all of your witnesses are?
Well, I'm hopeful that nobody's gonna be needed to be called as a witness, because it's just gonna be informal, but if you have to swear anybody in.
I'll leave it, Tenny has some witnesses.
Yeah, we have some people that would like to speak on behalf of Mrs. Smith.
Okay.
Just to serve as a chief of office.
If we can just ask them, whoever those people may be, just so we can see who they are, and maybe, yeah, just stand if you would please, and just raise your right hand. Will you do that, Miss Polly? Miss Polly will address, or lead you here, please.
Do you swear of the other crew, the whole crew, and nothing but the crew?
Thank you very much, and that way we'll have to do that as we go along.
That'd be great, to have a list of people who just might say.
Okay. You aren't gonna have any witnesses other than Mrs. Lucas?
We went ahead and swore in Superintendent Lucas, as well as the treasurer, Brittany Gandy, just in case there were questions that came up. And from Mr. Tenny's side, I'm not sure who.
If you could just have each person that's going to testify identify themselves, please, for the record.
Sure. We'll start with Tom. This time, Tom Scopolella, worked for the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals, the juvenile probation officer.
Michael Tierney, I direct step-by-step, and collaborated with schools here for the last 25 years.
I'm Darwin.
I'm Darwin Polly, I'm the upperclassor at Marshall University.
And Jennifer?
My name is Jennifer McKay, a parent, I'm a student of the S.H.S., and also work with the county with three students.
Is that everybody?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Tinder.
Thank you. I don't think we're disputing that enrollment is declining. I don't think we're disputing that the funding in the county is diminishing. We all know that funding is partially dependent upon enrollment, and because of the declining enrollment, there's less state aid. In addition to that, I think everybody's aware, at least through the newspaper, if not otherwise, about the assessments issue, in terms of the assessments not being made at the level that's required by the statute, which could impact this county for next school year, and to the tune of $578,000 as a penalty, which will not pass through to the county. There are also federal funds being eliminated or non-renewed or in unknown status, and all of these things have to be taken into consideration by the county in planning for next school year. Now, we would hope that all of those things would turn around, that families would move into the, to the county, and the numbers would go up, that the assessment will be set aside somehow, either through legislation that's pending right now, or through other means, and we're hopeful that all grants will be restored, renewed, continued, but we cannot plan for that for this coming school year. So, money is an issue. Unfortunately, in Lincoln County, as in most counties, the largest financial cost line item, so to speak, is personnel, and so, there are certain areas you can't cut. You can't cut your light bill, you can't cut the cost of fuel for buses, so you have to make cuts in the areas that you can. So that would be maintenance on facilities and equipment, and that would be programs, and that would be personnel. And so, what you're seeing here tonight is a result of planning for next school year, which will impact all of those things, and what we're addressing here today is personnel. The particular position of Miss Smith is being recommended for elimination because it is neither a required position by code, by state law, or by state policy, so it is a program that is, it's legally expendable. Now granted, there are a lot of benefits to keeping this particular position that's held by Miss Smith, and the recommendation to eliminate it has absolutely nothing to do with her performance in that position, or the worth or value of that position, only that the superintendent had to make very difficult decisions to make recommendations to this board, and the elimination of that particular program, which meant the elimination of that position, was one of the areas of recommendation. As a result of that, the normal procedure is to look at the certification of the individual in that position, and that is Miss Smith, and unfortunately, she does not hold certification in any other area to which she could be transferred. And so, as a result, with the elimination of her position, there is no place for her to fump, which would be the normal procedure for professionals, and as a result, it's the recommendation of the superintendent that she be terminated and placed on preferred recall. And I think that's basically the understanding of what we're doing here today, but we'd like to give the employee and her representative the bulk of the opportunity to address you and the reasons for retaining that position, but if they have any questions of the superintendent or the treasurer about what I've just described, they're available for that.
I'll just go with the opening statement. We've all heard the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." It also takes an entire school staff to educate them. You've heard those words like unfunded mandates, state aid formula, and essential and non-essential staff, and countless other words that are used in education. So when we come before you today representing Miss Smith, she fits some of those words. Her job is not funded by the state aid formula. If you're in a classified position, Lincoln County Schools, your place are in a category of non-essential. However, if you lose this employee, you're gonna lose a lot more than a school social worker. You're gonna lose a caring educator that provides countless services to students all over Lincoln County, not just Lincoln County High School. Her programs provide meals to needy students and their families, not only during Christmas and Thanksgiving, but throughout the weekends, with her pantry she's set up. She coordinates giving things like clothing, and shoes, and socks, and coats, and gloves, and that type of thing during the winter months for those students, for the parents who cannot afford those materials for their family. She made sure every, every student in Lincoln County High School had a Christmas. Over thirty students had a Christmas because of Miss, Mrs. Smith and the donations she was able to receive. These donations came from staff and from the community. She was the person who collected all of those. There's, throughout the school year, some students may become pregnant, and that's one of the leading causes of dropout. Because of Miss Smith, she's able to have these young mothers obtain basic necessities to probably.
That's Polly, just one minute.
Sure. Some of these young mothers who've become pregnant, the high school are at the highest risk to drop out. Because of the things she provides at the high school, these young mothers are able to stay in school and obtain their diploma. She, as this faculty stated with the things that she provides those young mothers with, along with counseling and things in the community that can help them. As you know, each student that drops out, that's a $5,000 loss for your school system. Miss Smith can actually pay for her position by saving ten to twelve students from dropping out of Lincoln County High School. More importantly than money, Miss Smith keeps these students in school so they can become productive members of society. We come before you this evening asking you not to riff the social worker position at Lincoln County High School. This isn't so much about Miss Smith, that she'll land on her feet, she has a degree, she'll get a job somewhere, but this is for the students of Lincoln County High School and the other schools that Miss Smith helps out.
Okay. So, you having, excuse me, any witnesses or further comments?
Not at this time unless Mr. Tenny has some questions about the funding or the enrollment.
Just, I do have a couple of questions for the superintendent about how they're gonna fill the needs of this position being held.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask her some questions about that, and then give me an opportunity to follow up. Superintendent, the recommendation that you're making as it relates to the social work position is going to leave some of the duties that the social worker that is currently doing potentially not being accomplished. How is it that those activities will be accomplished?
Well, I've been working with the principal, and I've been looking at the duties that have, that Mrs. Smith has been responsible for, and looking at the staff that he does have. There are three counselors there, as well as, you know, other staff members that I think will be very willing to step up because of some of the things that she has been doing for students, that they will not want to see that stop, and they will be part of some of those responsibilities.
Okay. And if this position is not cut, do you know approximately how much money will not be saved?
Um, yes, around fifty-six, oh, over $56,000.
Okay, so that's the value of this cut?
Yes.
Right, I don't think I have anything further.
Tenny, do you have any questions for Miss Lucas?
Ms. Tinder's first question was actually gonna be my first question, so thank you. Could the, could the connection be made, and if twelve students are safely dropping out, would that could pay for Miss Smith's salary? This one?
Oh, thank you.
And I just, I'm a little too sick, so if you can't hear, she has a sort of.
One of the things that we have to look at, when we make the decisions regarding particular positions that will be eliminated, or will be able to be eliminated, in December, around December, we get from the State Department, West Virginia Department of Education, a preliminary budget. We have to look at what monies that they are giving us, giving each county, we have to look at what we're getting to be able to staff and run Lincoln County schools. And when they give us this preliminary budget, we have to look at the number of positions that we have physically is able to continue. Then we have to look at how much that, how many positions that the state is not going to fund for us, that this county must pick up and pay for. And when you talk about numbers of students, you know, we're looking at much more money than twelve students, because at this point in time, what the state is telling us is that Lincoln County is carrying forty positions, more than what they're going to fund. They're not going to give us money to fund those positions. And those decisions regarding what I need to recommend, I have to look at elementary positions, the state's very specific on what I must have, as far as classroom teachers, they're very specific, the number of students that requires a teacher, and if I go over that, then I have to place enough teachers there, very specific. I have to make sure that we're providing what the state says you must have, Superintendent Lucas, in your building. We will probably be a little over because they're not giving us enough money for outreach positions, or special education aides. They're only going to give us money for certain. So, when I look at what we have to determine when we make recommendations regarding the cuts, I meet with our treasurer, Miss Gandy. They give us specific dollar amounts, and at this time, Miss Gandy, I would like for me to tell what those preliminary numbers show, if that's okay.
Okay. Okay, for this year, or that, actually for next year, as Miss Lucas said, we're gonna be over 40.059 positions, and we'll break that down. Twenty-three point seven six nine of those positions are service positions, at an estimated cost of $38,000 a year, which is equivalent to $903,000 for service personnel, that there's no funding for. Okay? Service people, professional people, we're gonna be over 16.29 at $60,000 a position, that's $977,000. So when we add those two groups together, we're gonna be over, and when I say over, there's no money to pay these people. So it's like, you know, I know everybody wants us to keep all these positions, but we can't pay them, okay? And that jeopardizes the people that we, you know, that we need to have and needing payroll. So, what we're trying to work through now is trying to get that 1.8 million down to a reasonable amount, and fund the positions that are necessary to continue the education of our children.
So to answer your question about twelve students, that one you would put a dent into, you know, and that's, you know, we want to keep every student that we can, but I want to express, you know, if that was all that it was going to take, you know, we would be looking at this differently. But we're looking at forty positions that the state's not going to give, Lincoln County funds before, Lincoln County taxes, the things that we luckily have in order to pay for those positions. This is not an easy decision, looking at, that I have to have in the schools what the state says that I must have. Those, those are non-negotiable. Those positions are not negotiable. I have to look at the ones that are negotiable, that they say is not required, and I think as you said, and I don't, I don't like the phrase, non-essential, because I believe wholeheartedly that everyone does what they need to do, and that they're very caring, and they're very committed. Again, this is not easy. We're not just looking at, oh, we can cut this position, we can cut this position. I have to make our recommendations based upon the guidelines that the State Department says, in, that's the form, you know, when the legislators deem what's required for school systems, and the state board says, this is what you must have in your schools, then there are positions that you do not have to have, that are not required. Unfortunately, those ones I have to look at first, and hopefully that is true.
Are you aware that Miss Smith works with more schools than Lincoln County High School?
Yes.
What will it take to keep this position in Lincoln County schools, a social worker position?
The state gives us a grant, and we have to be careful about grants, because they give you a grant, and the grant's gone, you have to be able to sustain that position, and unfortunately, Lincoln County is not in the position to keep lots of positions that are not funded by this program.
And if the community of Mrs. Smith were able to find funding, do some alternative means, would you, would you reverse your riff decision with her if that goes through tonight?
I would, I would consider anything that's more performative.
That's all right.
That doesn't raise any questions for me.
Okay. All right, so at this time, Mr. Tenny, do you have, if no one has anything further, do you have witnesses that?
Yes.
What, to address the board?
Sure, and they're sitting in the back, maybe when we call the name, they can come up front so they can be recorded properly.
Certainly, that'd be easier, and it'd be easier on Miss Polly, too.
Maybe over to the side if you don't know.
No, I'll chair up.
Okay. First, the first one to do it towards Tom, Tom, I'll push your ass.
Tom Bellini, Tom Bellini, I'll help you with that. Thanks. Tom's already been sworn in, so.
And Tom, the only question I have pretty much for you is what, how does Miss Smith help you with your job, and what do you see in her role in Lincoln County schools?
Well, I'm the juvenile probation officer for the county. The last time I appeared before the school board was middle school system council in probation, and I think this is a very similar type situation, even though it carries a social worker. I deal on any, at any given time, I have over a hundred students from the county on my list that I work with. Most of them are middle school, high school age, I have a big number at the high school, and there's a very limited number of resources that are available to deal with these kids. Luckily, I have huge support through the Department of Human Services, through the Youth Services. Division of Juvenile Services is stepping up and doing more and more with the high school. They have a very limited amount of counselors at the high school compared to the population of the school, and Carrie has been able to fill a void there that just isn't there for any others. I've had a number of kids that are involved in her programs regarding teen pregnancy, both boys and girls. She supports these kids. These are kids are very high risk to drop out of school, and I've heard the arguments on both sides here with the idea of money and dropouts, and that's an argument we've made with the other counselors and stuff before. Seems like that we're very reactionary in this county when we find out what the budget's gonna be for the next year, we start making moves to try to adjust things instead of look ahead, but, you know, I feel that due to positions we've lost in the past, we've had more kids drop out in the county than were necessary, and we've lost funding. You know, I see that, you know, I don't know exactly how many people it's gonna take, whether it's twelve or some other number, but, you know, it's something that's repeated every year, and you have a child that drops out, that's a tenth or eleventh grader, and those numbers multiply from year to year as you go through, and, you know, we can't bring new kids into the system, they may or may not move in here, we can't force families to stay that may be gonna leave our system, but we do have. But we do have these kids that are enrolled in our system that we need to hang in there. It's not just the girls that are involved in these teen pregnancies issues, it's the boys as well. And I see the stress that they go through and the decisions that they're trying to make. And they're becoming parents at very early ages, and they're not ready for it, neither the boys nor the girls. I'm also involved in other community agencies that deal with Carrie as far as helping supply food and Thanksgiving dinners for families that she deals with and such. Literally, there would be kids that are going home hungry on weekends. Actually, we, a group of us were talking over all the snow days that we had through December and into January. And we're wondering how some of these kids were going to be feeding when they weren't going to be at school and Carrie wasn't going to be fixing a backpack for them to go home and take something home on the weekend. It's a great concern, you know? And is it the school board's, or job to feed our kids on the weekend? Maybe not. But it's our job as a community to be looking after these kids. And Carrie's taken a position that sits very unusual and, and very well respected. When I have kids in middle school or high school, the first thing I ask them is when I deal with them in my office is, who at school do you have that you really trust? Who do you have there that's in the administration that you could go to if you're being bullied? Or if you're, have a problem, or if something's going on? And these kids come up with the same names over and over. It's a very small group that they, they truly confide in, that they feel like they can trust. Carrie's name comes up very often as somebody that I can go to with a problem, that if I'm scared, if something's going on, that she's somebody that they feel is in a position that's a little bit different. And that she has a way with these kids of reaching some kids that honestly other people don't seem to be able to do. I really respect her and what she does, all the programs she gets involved in, things that are probably beyond her job description. You know, we're losing a, I know this is an attack, an attack on Carrie, it's, it has to do with her position. I think it's a very sterile view that's presented by the superintendent as to just numbers and facts and figures. I'd like to see the county get to a point where they're making a plan to hit five years as to where they're going, not just reacting to what the budget's going to be next year. There is going to be additional funding coming into the county in, in years come when the assessor gets its office straightened out and when they start bringing more funding in. But the problem is that what's happening two years from now, we're losing key people now that won't be, be able to be replaced. And it'd be really nice to be able to figure out ways to hash things over until some of those things happen. I hope the legislature comes through and helps us a little bit. But Carrie's a, a key person. And she's a special person in a unique position. So she's somebody that I depend on. And if she's not there in that position, it's somebody that I will truly miss from my office.
I don't have any further questions. Any questions?
Just, just a couple of questions. You work also pretty extensively with the school counselors, is that correct?
Yes.
And they do a lot of the similar things that Miss Smith does as well, correct?
Somewhat. I mean, they do counseling. And they do planning of schedules. And they get transcripts for people. And to be honest, our counselors at the school are overwhelmed in what they do. They don't have time to do what they do now.
But I'm guessing some of their names come up when you're asking the students?
Oh, yes. And, and certain administrators and certain teachers and certain custodians and, I mean, across the board, it's, it's really unique.
So there are great people across the board that will step in when needed?
We're, we're fortunate to have a lot of good people in the county system.
And there are three counselors at the high school, is that correct?
I think there's two counselors that actually do the counseling part. And you're probably speaking to Jessica is being at the high school, too. And she's kind of doing a truancy program that's kind of very specific to, so she's not doing the same thing that the other counselors are doing. We lost one of the counseling positions just recently.
Right. But the, but she is doing counseling in that she's trying to make sure all of the students come to school.
She's not doing school counseling as such, as defined by a school counselor.
In terms of scheduling and that kind of stuff?
Correct.
She's doing more of the face-to-face with the students. What do you say?
Yeah, but she's in a different capacity.
Right. Which includes making sure the kids get to school.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have anything.
Thank you, Ms. Garbley.